Thank you so much.
You're welcome. And I think I included in the enrollment sheet on the back.
We have. We've been under 11.
Yeah. Yes.
Okay.
But we added the, the intent to return figures on the bottom.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And we're gonna.
Cost me about a couple thousand dollars.
Yeah. Right, yeah. Generation.
Okay, you're live, guys.
You ready to go?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll go ahead and call to order and do a roll call. So why don't we start from that end of the table with Marissa?
Marissa Roberts.
Tofika Bahamdan.
Adrian McGinnis.
Jeff Honeycutt.
Erin Riley.
Emily Kaiser.
Okay, Matt Darden is absent today. He is out with an injury. So let's go ahead and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, those are the fastest three items in history. Let's go to number, number four, district update, attachment number one. Dr. Roberts, can you walk us through this?
Yes, I'm gonna kind of, can you guys hear me okay? Uh, I'm gonna kind of roll through a presentation, and I know you have seen parts of it, but I wanted to share this with the community as well, because we've had lots of conversations or questions. Um, and so I kind of wanted to give an overview and. So, um, just for the community, we, um, the board very graciously met and we had a board retreat, um, in January, and one of the things that we focused on was looking at school data. And looking at sort of projections moving forward and kind of trends. So I wanted to provide this to the community as a, sort of a background on some decisions about the calendar moving forward. So in, in any of a change environment, the first thing you look at is the evaluation of data. And so when I came aboard, one of the things I wanted to look at is to evaluate our trend data and really triangulate that data with multiple different aspects. So we could really identify where our student needs were and sort of where the learning gaps continue to arise, especially at the mid point of a pandemic and moving forward. Um, the goal for this was to ensure that we had structures in place that students were continually learning. Um, this PowerPoint's gonna be sent out to the community and, and there are embedded links, so I'm not gonna go in them all, but just know that they exist. So. We're looking at fall I-Ready data and looking at the ACT Aspire, where a big indication that we had student learning loss two to three years behind. In addition, we were able to compare the fall and winter I-Ready assessments for the elementary and notice that although we've got progress being made. You can see the kind of striped green. That's kind of a, that's where we want to be and we, we're showing a trend of actually getting there. But we still have larger areas towards the back end that we have got to address, which are three or more grade levels behind. And it accentuates into the yellow, which is two. So we, we are kind of at a halfway point where we've got 50% give or take of our population that still is in some learning deficit areas. These graphs are gonna kind of indicate some of our trouble spots. Reading and math become the front runners in K-12. The red, the orange, the yellow are really the gap analysis that show that we're one to three grade levels behind. The purple is a concern as well, which means those students did not test. Either they weren't in attendance. And attendance is a concern, or they did not complete the test to its completion.
Yeah.
It's not working.
There you go.
Again, this is some nine, 12 data. Same concerns, not as many as the three-year gap. But still, we've got big concerns with the red and the yellow area. At some points, they're almost half of the grade level. Math is a huge concern. So the red indicates that we're in need of support. So as you can imagine, as students move through and determine their college career track, math being that one indication of college success and actually graduating on time, there is concern. So when we look, I'm just gonna let you progress as a teacher.
Okay.
Sure.
So when we look at that data, we try to determine who needs intervention. And what are their screeners or what data is really necessary to determine that? So it is the I-Ready and it's the ACT Aspire, but it's also those classroom assessments. It's actually what teachers are seeing in the classroom. And students' ability to kind of work in peer groups and demonstrate mastery to their teachers. So currently, right now, our data indicates that we've got 42% of our students, K-6, below grade level in reading. 61% below math, 45, 7, 12 below grade level, and 68% below grade level in math. These numbers are concerning because what we also have to look at is the progression of kids as they move through. So if we don't catch their learning gaps as quick as possible and try to diminish that, those gaps will continue to grow. So some of the questions have come up about why, why are we looking at an extension of time in our school day? And what's the, what's the purpose? And what do we need to do with kids? That are below, but also what is that group of kids that we know are advancing in acceleration? So there are three components here that we're looking at addressing with some innovative and sort of different approaches. Currently, the Department of Education monitors all, all data and all reporting. Act 1082 is part of the Department of Education, DESI, Division of Elementary and Secondary Education, where they determine schools that are in need of support. When you become a level score in need of support school, that basically says that Department of Education's going to come out and very clearly identify what you need to get better, and you have a certain amount of time to do that in. I just got this data today. So districts, charters included, that are having more than 50% other students in that lowest in need of support category will trigger a Level 4 indication.
Are we Level 4?
No. Let me reassure, we are not. Was very, very glad, but as you can see from that previous slide, there are nine charters in this state that are. Um, Level 3 is the next step down. So that is 40% or more in that lowest category. So when you look at data, not only is it student concerning, it's our statewide Department of Education level heightened awareness that we doing what we need. Now, you know, this is their job. It's Department of Education. They are monitoring schools just as they should. And if you are in these levels of support, what they're gonna try to do is come out and give you support. But it's very scripted and it's very intense and they really making sure that you move those kids through a process so they are improving. The good thing about these levels of support. And this is kind of a graph to show you what that looks like when you're in those particular levels. So these are, that's been redacted for privacy, but those charters have been identified as either Level 3 or Level 4. And the actions Department of Education indicates are very specific, but some of those things we are already doing this year. In advance of even being identified as a level school. So thanks to our new curriculum, thanks to our work with the 95% group in K-1 and 2. Thanks to our work and focus on PLCs. Thanks to our looking at scaffold alignment with curriculum, we are already advancing the preparatory work to help address that low-end bracket. So that's the great work is that although it seems like it's a lot. We are doing exactly what we should to address some of these learning deficits.
Is there a call, like, is there a call out off of this, what we are doing, or is it all of it we are currently doing?
We are doing lots of different things throughout all of those. So again, we're not in this group. We're not being identified, highlighted or anything. We recognize if we don't make some drastic changes, we will, because our learning gaps are going. We are doing, if we could go through and analyze some of that stuff, we're doing a lot.
Yeah, I just wanna like, because you mentioned that you're, uh, there's a plan to share some of this out to the community. If we can call out specifically, what are the things that we are doing, um, to stay ahead of the curve? Um, I think it would help the community to understand, um, better of, you know, where we are and what we're doing to kind of stay ahead of the curve.
And we're, we're doing, and I'll be happy to put that together, because on that list, it also talks about RTI, Response to Intervention, which I'll talk about in a minute. We're really embedded in that work right now. It's talking about the FOMAX, the Rise Instruction. A lot of that stuff we're reiterating with our 95% group in our new curriculum. Um, in the pink, it talks about support staff from APSRC. So that is our sort of charter organization. We're already contracting with them for some PLC training this spring, and we contracted with them for an embedded, all-year-long intensive at the elementary school for PLC support. So we are, I was very pleased to see this today, to know that we are tracking with the support mechanism, as that would be the pride from the Department of Ed. So when we look at, I mentioned RTI a minute ago, when we look at RTI, determine what kids are at risk. Really what we're looking at is not necessarily labeling them at risk, but we're trying to identify. How severely we need to, as our teachers or as a school district, rethink how they're being driven by instruction. Placing them in smaller learning environments, very dedicated time to their instruction, and focusing on where they are specifically lower in their benchmarks or their skills. Tier 1 is basically in the classroom, and that's something you just kind of do all the time. It's like you're re-explaining something. Like everyone learns in a very different way. So when we're at that tier 1 level, it's really re-explaining a way in the kid that understands it the best. That tier 2, that's some risk, so they're kind of on the edge. You can see that they don't quite comprehend or they don't have the, really the, um, the mastery of content, but they, they're quick to get it and sometimes, and they just need a little bit more guidance. We've got significant amount of kids in tier 2, and it's not for any other reason than we did, they just need more time with their teacher. They need more small group instruction. That high-risk group, that tier 3. We have a smaller percentage of those, but those are the kids that are the most at risk for continual learning decline. So that tier 3, although they might be a smaller percentage, they truly drive that response to intervention time.
Have we done our analysis on, you said we've already identified the students that are in tier 1, 2, and 3? Have we done analysis to show like, the numbers by grade and like, the subjects, teachers, all that to try to get into understanding? Because I'm gonna get into this a little bit later, but there's some things that are, I'm hearing about, uh, around class instruction that I think could contribute to some of what we're seeing here. And I'm wondering if there's a direct correlation there.
Well, that's a very good point. So we, these tiers are very fluid, and it's very fluid depending on the content area. It could be reading or it could be math. It could be a specific concept. It could be. So they're, they're not sort of stuck there, but for the most part, it's a pretty good indicator of where their skill set needs assistance with. Um, all teachers are being identi, are, all students are being looked at for their areas of need. And that's one of the reasons, and we'll get to that in a minute, why we have proposed a different calendar, because we've got to address those very specific individual concerns.
Are parents gonna get a communication at some point saying your student is, is in, has been identified as high-risk and we are going to need to take specific steps?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, and again, some of these conversations are beginning to manifest, because now we've got two pieces of data from the I-Ready, the fall and the winter, that really begins to triangulate that. Parents, um, should be having conversations, or teachers should be having conversations back and forth, talking about, you know, where kids are at. Um, the high school operates on advisory period, that some of that is being addressed. But keep in mind, RTI is a new concept this year for this school, and so we're really working on identifying what that looks like. Some of these three, two-year, three-year gaps are COVID-related, and if you can think about it this way. Some of our, our second graders, for the most part, have one semester of school in kindergarten until this year. So if they did not have a very successful learning experience virtually. That gap has created this, this, this pocket, and those are the formative years when they begin to learn to read. And the reading and math computation go hand in hand. So it's a process. Okay, so this is kind of a visual of what those tiers look like. That bottom tier is that everyday core classroom. So teachers are giving modifications to kids across the board, whether or not they have an IEP. It's a constant reteach process. It's also called formative assessment. So if you're asking kids to repeat back or thumbs up, high five, if you get it, all those things are your quick indications that kids are catching on to the content. And if not, what did needs to happen with that teacher to reteach it and where they get it? The tier 2 is begin that targeting part. So what specifically is that gap of learning that's not being able to be met? Is it a comprehension? Is it decoding? Is it deflucency? What is it? That 3 is that part that is the most intensive. It is that small group interaction with, with teachers. It is that really identification of where, where the problem areas are. The goal of any of this work is to move kids down through, through the tier process and back down to where they can easily function within the core classroom successfully. That kind of work for teachers to collaborate and evaluate data and really think about kids' needs has to happen in a process called PLC. Professional Learning Community. I mean, we all have professional learning communities wherever we go, but the intentional PLC that happens in a school building is all around student data. Looking, analyzing, organizing curriculum in a way, having common assessments, and thinking about how to small group kids. So if we think about that tier, and we look about what support structures need to go around it. Those are again, the intervention groups with continuous monitoring. And the other piece is that aligned curriculum. So luckily, we were able to purchase, and we talked about this before, really purchase specific aligned curriculum that teachers can use. That is dedicated, it is common conversation, it is a common commitment from the teacher to teach, that we can actually look at common assessments. So we, these are the curriculum pages, and we don't have to go into them, but we, Heather talked about this before, the curriculum pages that she's able to link onto the website now. That we can actually identify what we're being, what's being taught in the classroom, things that parents can preview. Extra curricular, um, or extra enrichment parts within the content. All of this is happening because of our dedication to curriculum.
So just real quick, I, I just wanna touch on something before I forget. On the, the tiers. I think it's important for us to get a understanding of where we stand. Right when we're getting ready to, or we, I mean, we already kind of launched this, this new curriculum. We're already down that path. I think it's good and important for us to get a baseline of where we are in each tier. And monitor the progress of the success of this new curriculum, and I'm pretty sure we're gonna see it, right? Like, we're gonna see a lot of improvement, but I think it's important for, for us, for the districts, for the community to see that reflected. And I would like to have that be part of the, the monthly update that, that comes in. And we share some of that data, you know, with, with the community to, to show, hey, we presented this new curriculum. Here's, here's the impact. It's, it's, you know, it's data. Data does not lie.
Yeah, we can absolutely do that. In fact, we'll have Heather come back next month, because, because of I-Ready, which is one of our testing mechanisms. Parents and teachers can pull very, very specific data on their students and their classrooms. Down to what even resources you could use at home to help the literacy rate. Where are the specific skill gaps each kid has very specifically? So this, this exists within this program. We can definitely have her come. We will continue to track and monitor. That's what happens in those PLCs. It's the administrators that holds that very accountable, to make sure that in those PLCs, in those teacher groups, that type of conversation is happening.
Is the, I, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Is the I-Ready testing that we have, is that elementary level only? Because I have seen from my elementary school teacher. Just what you said. She was very specific, very thorough ideas on how to move the needle, no matter where the child was. What do we have at the high school level that is like that?
Thank you for bringing that up. So currently, I-Ready does not go into high school. We use Renaissance.
Okay.
That was a program that was here when I got here.
So I-Ready, I'm sorry, you finish up.
That's okay. Um, I-Ready is K-8, K-6, K-6. Renaissance is the other end of that. We are looking at, do we need to stick with Renaissance, or do we look at NWA MAP? So Marissa's graciously volunteered to sit on that committee. As we look at, is our secondary data collection source exactly what we need? And if not, it's time to move in this, at the end of this year, and begin a more intensive developmental process for map testing. Because what we really wanna do, especially at high school, is identify those gaps and hit them as hard as we can in the most conducive way possible. To get kids to graduate on time and to get them the most successful they can launch into the next phase. We're not doing anybody any service if we're not using the best tools. So we're having those conversations very soon.
So currently, we're using I-Ready in elementary. We're using Renaissance in secondary. Um, and those. Okay, so K-8 is, okay, I-Ready's K, so still, just those two.
In, in high school, we also, and elementary, we use ACT Aspire.
And how often are the kids taking those? Is it twice a year? Twice a year. So it's, so thinking about measuring progress or tracking progress, is there a mechanism for us to, to measure progress or, or lack thereof more frequently than twice a year? I would assume not, based on that.
Well, we could, we can do it more internally in classroom, classroom assessments. So that's a great thing about having this new curriculum, is everyone's teaching the same content, basically. They might teach it a little bit differently, but the core content, skeleton is the same. So then they can have common assessments. And then they begin to compare the assessment data and see, this teacher is, has great scores in this, but what are you doing to make that work so well here? You know, so they begin to share and collaborate on this conversation about kids' learning needs.
Do you feel like that data can be compiled in such a way that could be shared in a meaningful way with, with us?
Yes.
And is a monthly basis, is that reasonable?
Yes.
Yeah, because I love Tafik's idea. I just wanna make sure that's something that's doing.
A lot of those assessments is not showing, it's not proving what you need. More of a diagnostic of showing us like.
Are they growing?
Yeah, like, or, or, hey, here are specific pieces of this kid, and we can show you, hey, here's a, so this kid had, we just did grammar at the, at the high school, right? Uh, kiddos, whether they can read or not, some struggle with grammar, right? So we say, hey, here's the diagnostic screener that we did, here's where they were, and we use that as a reassessment. We go through some form of intervention, whatever that might look like. In this case, it was three weeks, and then we do a post-assessment, and we can say, hey, this is, either they, they grew or they didn't. And if they didn't, here's what we think happened and how we can impact them.
So with not, with not having a reliance on data to drive decisions, it's just sort of a reeducational component. But the important part is, it gives us real-time information that we're gonna be able to use moving forward. Another component to the PLC work that we're focusing on, in addition to the, to the curriculum, is this horizontal and vertical sequence. So is it lining up K-12? Is 6th grade in a position that preparing kids enter into 7th grade and, and moving forward? And how does that flow happen? And that has to happen with teachers having conversations about what's essential? What do they determine the essential standards for their class? And how are they working to meet those? Because there's a concept, you know, every, every content has state standards and national standards, and those have been determined by lots of different individuals. As what's, what needs to be taught or what needs to be learned. There's so many in every content that there's no way to get through them at all. So teachers have to really identify what's the most essential standards kids need to have to demonstrate mastery in this class, and they have to agree upon that. Department of Ed's a great resource. Um, and a lot of that stuff is already scripted out in curriculum, like someone has helped to determine what's essential. And so, and the essential has been determined by what's needed at the next grade level, or what needed for, you know, particular progression. So with those essential standards, then, teacher can say, okay, these are my essential standards at 3rd grade. These are mine at 4th grade. How do they align? Are we making sure they align? So kids are scaffolding their learning. So guaranteed and viable, Heather talked about this, um, last time. The single most important initiative that school or district can use to raise student achievement. It's all about what's being taught in the classroom. So this is sort of a detailed chunk, and I give super credit to Marissa for helping me. I give super credit to Heather Davis for helping block this out, because they've looked at the curriculum. They've really identified why we can really benefit from a seven and a half day. Now, some of the, some of the comments I've heard from parents are, what is additional 30 minutes gonna do? But the concept, it is not that we're tacking on 30 minutes at the end of the day. We're adding in time throughout the day to allow teachers to work in those small groups to address individual students that need intervention. Or reinforcement, or we are identifying kids that are accelerating, and we're moving them on and up into some enriching activities. So they are not just sitting solid in a class while the, a percentage of the kids need that focused remediation. So you see that RTI at the bottom? So what that is, it's not 30 minutes of RTI at the end of the day. These are not in any particular order or order of priority. It's just the time, the minimum time needed. To address these components in a day. They can fluctuate. They can vary between day to day. But this is how content teachers and the buildings are gonna use this seven and a half hour day.
And these, all these minutes are, I mean, the ALA math and reading are mandatory in order to teach the curriculum efficiently and effectively for each grade level.
So when I, so I gave a presentation to both campuses, and we walked through a lot of this information. And the relief of teachers seeing this is, okay, I can breathe now, because they are so. We have such a diligent staff. They are so concerned and caring about student learning. That they, they worry about down to the minutes, if they have enough time. And then the stress of, I didn't get to this, or I didn't get to this student today, or I need a small group. All of those things compound to an incredible amount of stress. So this 30 minutes is giving the ability for teachers to pull in some small groups, engage everyone with. Engage everyone with, um, learning in a way that they have some time. We're building in some recess for K-4 that's needed, need that brain break. We're gonna build in the ability to kind of manipulate these schedules in the best way that meets. We're gonna build in the ability to kind of manipulate these schedules in the best way that meets kids' learning.
I should also mention, because it seems like there's not a ton of science or social studies, but the science and social studies is embedded in the ELA curriculum in terms of what the kids will actually read. But the hands-on time, that's where that science is separate and social studies is separated. Does that make sense? For like project-based learning with social studies and the science.
So it's intertwined. We're also extremely fortunate at our school that we are a mission of arts integration. Because research indicates that arts integration is a um best practice approach to memory retention and content mastery. So the brain works in a way that if you teach a kid through another modality, through another creative outlet, they're going to retain that information and be able to transfer it on to something else. It sticks with them. You guys can remember songs you learned as a kid, or can remember lyrics from the radio. Even if you weren't even listening to it, remember the repetition, same kind of concept. But as a young kid growing up and learning, it's even more solidified when it's a constant approach to learning. So this is our mission, and this is fabulous because this is going to help us grow even more. So another thing we want to talk about briefly, and this is very in-depth. But we get, every school, based on two thousand and fifteen, when President Obama changed No Child Left Behind to um Every Student Succeeds Act, is our sort of overall report card. How we're judged, how we're looked at, how we're scoring with all of the data we input. So again, the details will click on to more specifics. But the biggest parts that we are assessed and evaluated on is our student achievement, is our growth. Well, someone, I think, Tafik mentioned, the the not necessarily addressing those skills, but looking at the growing, how much they're growing. And uh that data is pulled from lots of different sources. How we're moving our ELL pro kids from where they enter into proficiency and no need of monitoring. Um, are we graduating kids on time? Um, how is our student overall success? Are we making progress? Are kids on grade level and attendance? Attendance is huge. Attendance is an issue with our district right now. Kids are either tardy, they're excessively tardy, they're not attending at all. Or it's spotty attendance. So there's no congruent consecutive attendance schedule that allows them to retain information on a long-standing day-to-day basis. These links will pull very specifically what our trends are for SSAS scores. And then this is kind of where our goals are moving forward. So my goals are that we move to A status with those schools as quick as possible. Realistically, it's going to take baby steps. The K six has been in a B consistently for too long. It's time for them to accelerate and move up because they are there. And now with this new curriculum and a ninety-five percent, I believe we can do that. Um, high school dropped. A lot of that was because they are getting an influx of kids from COVID that have gaps that we haven't been able to address. So when kids aren't on grade level by third grade, research says they're losing double time as they progress if they aren't on grade level reading by third grade. So that's a lot of catch-up that the high school has to do when they enter seventh grade and they're two to three grade levels behind in reading. It's it's focused, very intense work. But I believe if we stay on the trajectory of our curriculum, of our RTIs, of our strong interventions, that we can make this type of progress.
So are you expecting a one point five increase for years?
I would like to see a one point five increase per year.
That's what this is based off.
Now, anything above that is terrific. But if we are dedicated and we're focused and very intentional with the work and hope, and administrators are accountable for the work. Teachers are all in, and they're working together, and they're really teammates. We've got kids that are attending and showing up on time. I believe this work can be done.
So I just, I think that since the, there is a new curriculum that was introduced recently, and we're going into it starting this semester. Um, like, shooting for a one point five increase the first year is.
So this is for next year.
For next year, right?
Yeah.
I'm just saying, like, after that, like, I I can see that during a time of change and new curriculum and trying to get used to new things. Like a. Once we get to a point where we're like, we we are used to the new curriculum. What I would like to see is that that increase is a lot higher
Yeah.
than the increase that we did while we were going through the change.
Yeah, I.
If that makes sense, but I'm.
And I I really think this is a conversation that I would love to have with parents many times. Because I don't think they understand how significant attendance is. And I don't think they understand really the hard work that goes on on a day-to-day basis in the classroom. And still the work that needs to be done with their support. Parents play a huge, important role with kids and their learning at home. Even if it's simply making sure kids have time to study, but also they have time to sleep. And they have time to come to school, and if they need to eat lunch or breakfast here, whatever, that they're nourished. Their social, emotional health, all those things play into a healthy, learning child. So we we're partners. We're definitely partners in this process. So this this is the, this is how this calendar came about, is through all of the analysis of data, really looking at student needs. And I know we'll go into this calendar more, but I just kind of wanted to preface it. So there's not a confusion, you know, someone made a comment, oh, why does she want to come in and just change things? Check, things were just fine the way they were. But the realization is things aren't fine. Kids are not, we've got gaps, and we have to do better to support them because that's our responsibility. Um, if we keep things status quo, we will be very soon leveled, identified as a level three or four, which then red flags us for our long-term viability. So this particular calendar, we'll go through that in a minute. Yeah. Really looks at intentional time to allow some focused summer intervention for kids. This first week in blue is to get kids into the school space. Introducing them to the space, eliminating anxiety for parents and students. Doing some of those pre-academic screenings, so we're best placing kids where they need to be. So we don't have homogeneous classrooms. So we can do all the hearing and vision screenings with Ms. Katie, and all that's out of the way. We can do any kind of paperwork that needs to be done. We can look at engaging in fun activities during those four days to engage kids to come back. And then we are giving a week for teachers to really evaluate that data, to make sure everything is in check. They kind of have a better pulse of who shows up and what they needs, what their needs are, and then we start. Now, granted, not every parent might not want their kids to come to that, those four days, and that's perfectly fine. They could come to one of the three or whatever. We'll open up registration just so we know how to staff it. We're going to pay teachers on a separate pace, a separate contract to do this work, because all teachers are going to want to be doing it. But at least we've got more interest because we've got, given teachers a little extra time in the summer. So now we've got teachers saying, okay, I I've got a breather now this summer. We're not starting so early. I'm okay, I'm, so that's the focus of that. We've got a lot of situations at elementary where we've got lingering sort of still attachments at the K one-twos that are 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 not necessarily positive for the teacher right now. Parents have got to sort of let go and let the teacher begin that instructional time. And if we can start at eight o'clock on the dot, and kids are in their place, we're golden, we're ready to go. The summer learning, kind of the same thing. So we're going to have two variations, remediation and enrichment. The enrichment, kids can do both. They can do remediation and enrichment. They can do only enrichment, but the remediation part is going to give kids the opportunity for intervention, very fun and engaging intervention, but also some credit recovery time. For those four weeks, kids can make up a credit. Um, and then skill advancement, so they can improve some of their literacy frequency and comprehension. All those things in a way that won't, it's gonna be fun, but they're involved in learning. Very targeted, specific learning.
This part is optional.
Yes, completely optional, absolutely. And we will staff it based on kids enrolling. And not, again, not every teacher's going to want to do it, and that's perfectly fine. I get it. I've done summer school before as a teacher. It it's different, it's just kind of a different, kind of, it's just different. But I also know that I had to sacrifice a little bit. But we've given teachers an additional two weeks, so it's not going to be as if they've given up their whole summer, which, to be honest, teachers need. They need some break from school as well.
And is this, as far as the teachers that are doing this, is this aid as part of their contract, or is this a separate contract altogether?
Separate contract altogether. We'll pay them per hourly.
This is a new expense, or have we been doing this in the past?
This is a new, we're going to use our S for money, which is totally used for this student loss of learning. So we have the ability right now to use that. I've also been reaching out to some other funding opportunities. I just writ- wrote a grant, been talking to some funding partners on how to offset that. This will, schedule also allow some focused intervention time. So there's been, it's been um hard to staff intervention because, again, teachers are, they're really, uh, it's a lot. Teaching during COVID and beyond is is completely changed the dynamics of instruction. It will never go back to the way it was before COVID. It's challenging, it's exciting, it's all those things wrapped together. Because every kid is identified with a different need, and some are really skyrocketing, and some really need really very focused work, and then there's a lot of in and outs and all over. This will give more um interest in doing some focused intervention during those those orange weeks connected to spring break.
So is this gonna, what is it called today? During our, so that we have that week before spring break.
Intercession.
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 The intercession week.
These are the intercessions.
For fall break and spring break, okay?
Yeah, so um, what what, again, voluntary. For the intervention, teachers will recommend that to parents, and they'll, we'll staff it as needed. But um this will be very beneficial to identify, especially the times of the year that they're being placed on what kids can do to address some of those skill deficits.
It's gonna be limited based on available staff?
We will staff it based on. And for the summer school, I'm glad you brought that up. Thank you. For the summer school, we can also look at bringing in adjunct art teachers. And and really, for the enrichment part of it, looking at inviting other kids outside of our school and from the community, which allows us to showcase terrific and amazing work we do here and gets our community more familiar with our arts program. Um, but not our interventions we're holding very true with. The enrichment part, we have a great ability to showcase our school. So this is some of the data from the surveys that were sent out. I counted the neutral as okay either way. Um, so this is for the acceptance of the alternative calendar. And then this is for the eight, the three thirty, eight thirty to four o'clock timeframe. Now, obviously, the neutral could go either way.
And this is, this is public survey?
Yes.
Just to our, to parents, teachers, anybody?
Yes. This is the interest in summer school with very little information about what that looks like. So to me, that indicates there's interest. And once we put some specifics on what those things are going to look like, and the materials and all that stuff, um, I think we can generate a lot more. Um, I sent out a survey today because I will be very honest with you guys. When I presented to the elementary and the high school campuses, there were a lot of teachers concerned with the eight o'clock to three thirty at the elementary. Um, and I always want to advocate for teachers because that's just, that's my job, and it's also who I am. And I really told teachers I would support their their reasoning because they feel like, right now, there's a big gap in overlay of when kids get dropped off and when school starts. The seven forty-five is probably the most compromisable time, so seven thirty was an option. Be very hard to get kids in elementary through that drop-off and through eating breakfast and all that in fifteen minutes and be in their seat on time, especially if we're going to focus on attendance. Seven forty-five is a little bit more doable. But the general opinion from this particular survey is um that the eight o'clock stands. Because I wanted parents to also know how it would impact their bus riders. Because if they're riding a bus, the times are going to be altered based on, you know, fifteen minutes plus or minus and how that looks like.
So, but this is only eighty-four responses.
Yes.
This just went out today or yesterday, I want to say.
This went out today.
Yeah.
And so we.
So I'm sure we'll see some more pileups. So fifty, twenty-five, twenty-five, you're starting to see a trend. But one thing I did have a question on, on the the two previous surveys.
Yes.
Um, those are about like two, two hundred and eighty, I think, responses on each one of those. Was there anything that was tracking if the responder for those surveys had kids at which campus? Like, did we put anything that said, hey, I have, I I did the survey, and I cannot remember that part. But in like, in previous surveys, it'd be like, I have a kid in elementary, high school, both.
No.
We didn't have that, okay?
No.
That, like, I think that would have been an interesting way to look at.
Done that, but my fear with doing that is, we can, we have to look at the district as a whole. And if we, if we, I want to make everyone happy, and it's really hard to do that.
And I'm not saying that, like, to try, it's just, it'd be, I think it's an interesting metric to look at.
Yes, of course.
Because of just the way that we're structured, right? Like, we're a little different than other school districts in the area. So uh it it just, it would have been an interesting metric for me to.
One thing I want to call out really quick on the bus thing, and I think I understand why, but I think it's important for people to understand this. Um, the numbers there, if you're looking at them, they add up to more, greater than a hundred percent, like the the percentages themselves. But I believe it's because people who filled it out could select more than one option. So like, some people could pick two options or one option, so that's going to change your numbers. So I'm just for people at home looking at going, that's, the beta's wrong. I think it's influenced by that.
Well, and also, even though this went out today, people who don't use our bus service or wouldn't use our bus service are not going to fill this out.
Yes.
So we are going to see much fewer numbers.
Yes. And and another point that's kind of come up, all these, this is providing incredible feedback, both of the surveys. And I and I really take heart to all of it. We've got an incredible bus system that we pull kids from a fifty-mile radius. It's very unique, but we don't do doorstops like the surrounding districts. We pull in, we have, we have pickup locations. So the buses are are, they fill quick, and those seats are coveted. I I'm going to send out a bu- um, I want a, a bus rider intent form. Because I really want to make sure that we've got kids that are on the bus, that want to be on the bus, and we really clearly identify who's on our waitlist, because it's been all over the place. So I'm going to shore that up so we make sure. And if we need to add another route, that would be at a cost. But if that would determine a parent's success in getting their kids to school on time, I think it's something we should consider. So if we run a late route, I need the numbers to know, would that be fiscally a a positive move?
Well, I think also. Well, and I think also, information out to the parents, that if you put your child's name on this list, it's because you need service every day. If you put this child's name on the list, and you need them to ride the bus once a month. That, that's not okay, because they're taking a spot from a child that needs it every single day. So I think a little more detail to the community about, about the bus service and what it's for, and what our goals are. Will help too, because I know we get bombarded in the beginning of the year with requests. But then you, you know, you go to a bus stop, and they're picking up one kid at a stop or something, so.
And I think it's worth to your point, um, that throughout the year. You notice that the number of riders are going down, that we go back and like, check who's not. But, and, you know, check with those parents, with those families, are you, are you just not, you don't need the bus seat anymore? Let's try to give it to somebody else and all that, and be diligent about that.
I, you know, we're very lucky that we have the bus drivers we do. They are a hot commodity, and we are on wings and a prayer that nobody gets sick. No one does, because we rely on them so much, and right now, we're even having to double up, and it's been a juggling act. But I think we've got an interesting, um, prospect of getting their C D L that can drive a bus, that we can roll in. Um, so we're working on the busing part, it's a whole entity unto itself, but it's an important part of our school and getting kids. So really, I think. I, thank you for your time, and I feel like this is important, because a lot of these questions might come up, and I wanted to hit them head on. So I'm going to sit down now.
I think you're next, again.
Oh.
There's a war too.
Well, before we move on, from that, I do wanna say, I, I know it is, uh, it can be very. Um, it can be a difficult proposition for us to kinda come up and just hear things for, right off the bat, and kinda go, okay, what's the best way to handle this? And what do people think, and what do parents think? I really applaud you guys' effort of going out and actually communicating with our parents and with the teachers. To get an idea of what they feel, uh, in regard to some of these changes that would be really big, so very, very good job by you, by the administration and management for that.
Yeah, and, and being able to present, what you're presenting, using data. Is very, very helpful, because data-driven decisions are the best decisions you can make. Um, you know, I, I think I said this at least once already, data does not lie. I use this in my, you know, my, my, my day job, ev- every decision I make has to be driven by data. And that's how I track the success of that decision, so I think, I think, um, y'all have been doing a great job with, with that, so. I, I do have one question, it's more of a comment, I wanted to make sure that I bring this up, because. I've heard with the, the new curriculum and all that, and I think we have a lot of great and exciting changes going on. But there's a feed, uh, some feedback that I heard last year from my daughter. Um, in a couple of classes that she was in. And I'm hearing the same feedback from other parents and students that are taking those same classes this year. Going into the semester, um, where the instruction is a YouTube video. And that's it, a YouTube video with not a lot of detail. And to me, that's very concerning, um, so I did wanna make sure that I brought this up. Um, I wanna make sure that you're aware of this, and, you know, I, I hear a lot of things, but with this one, because it. Kinda hit close to home, you know, well, it hit at home, um, last year. Um, and I, I was hoping that this is something that stopped, and just hearing it that is still going on, I thought it's a little bit concerning. So I wanted to make sure that, Dr. Appleton, you know, you heard about it, and, and, and Dr. Roberts, you heard about it as well. And, you know, making sure that we continue down this path of this awesome curriculum and awesome, you know, way of. Um, instruction, um, to keep our numbers up, so I just wanted to make sure that that's brought up.
And I want you to know, when we talked about this, we had a board retreat about teacher evaluations. Well, that's important, because the goal is that administrators are in classrooms all the time, watching instruction. But I also wanna say that we did just recently put out on the parent portal on the website a feedback. So for those individuals in the community, have that kind of information, which is very valuable. If they want to do that anonymously, they can hit that and give us that type of feedback.
Yeah, and please do, for anybody that, that's hearing this and.
First of all, thank you for the feedback. Like I've said this, I might feel like, if my children, individual, and they're going to get kind of most of the things, and so, we do want that feedback. Um, I, I think one of the transitions that we're starting to see, and I appreciate the perspective of, it's gonna take us some time to get used to these new systems, systems and what we're doing. But I, I, to put it in the, kind of in the terminology of a former history teacher, like. Teachers are going from hunter-gatherers trying to fill time. To using resources appropriately. And I, I think when you look at that, YouTube and stuff like that, they're, they're, they're trying to find old resources that they can. Now, we're finally saying, here are the resources, focus on how to, focus on the kids and the teaching and learning, and what data is showing you. And what you need to do specifically to help each of these, you know, rather than spending all of your energy of, hey, let's keep these kids engaged, so. The zoo's calm. So I, I really think that would be like that, but I certainly do.
I appreciate that, thank you.
So, um, before we move on from the calendar and this discussion, do you need anything from us? Is this an item you need us to vote on, or anything like that?
I think calendar comes down.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
You can keep moving on then, sorry.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna let you guys, um, go through all of this on your own, I don't want to take any time. Um, with update, although I, I would hope, hopefully that the community and, um, have an opportunity. Whereas the great work that's happening in all these departments, so this report really is designed to give you information. Um, and to, to highlight the great work and honor these individuals, but also try to streamline our time. Um, our employee, um, shift, we've got some new hires. Uh, we've been able to find a care professional that's gonna help at the elementary school. This was a position that was approved earlier, I think maybe even last year, for like the, uh, elementary, like a aide. For classroom literacy, um, we were able to find a replacement for eighth grade. And then we have, um, a bus driver that resigned, which is, goes back to our conversation about the bus drivers. We're working to fill that, um, so again, if anyone knows, anyone that loves driving a bus. Or that we can convince is a great, uh, opportunity, please let me know.
Teach them how to love driving a bus?
That's it, that's it, yes, okay.
You guys need to take a moment to run over those really quickly, or are there any questions?
I'm scared that the, the COVID update is the one that I'm interested in, but, um, I he- I see that there's this old section that we're getting ready to.
Uh, I wanna give a quick shout out to Ms. Thomas and Ms. Dale, um, and then Mr. Jeremy Gabbert. They put on our parent night, uh, cyber awareness virtually, uh, this week. So, um, for those of you who weren't able to join, it's recorded, and, uh, Ms. Dale can send you the handouts of the slides. So it was, um, he had, he had a really good presentation, and I really appreciate, he's one of our parents, I really appreciate him taking his time to. Um, talk to our community and, and share his, all his good information.
Excellent, thank you, really trying to re-up the parent engagement nights, and so, I appreciate everyone for attending and being interested, thank you.
Uh, also, um, right before the meeting, I had a little bit of time, so I stopped by the, the basketball game, um, at the elementary school. And they were appreciating the seniors, uh, this is their last game, uh, today, so. It was nice to see how they, they were appreciated, uh, Coach Fred was calling the, the students out. And talking about something that, you know, an interesting story, but, you know, uh, what is their favorite art? And then their favorite teacher and all that, and they had, uh, you know, parents and friends and, and loved ones kinda walk out those students to the middle of the class. I thought that was, that was really nice, um. And the other thing I marked on here I wanted to ask about, the elephant's graveyard, on here it says it's gonna be football. I've heard it's canceled, do we know a hundred percent which, so it's canceled?
It's canceled, yeah.
There's been some chatter about tickets that were purchased and all that. We already have a plan to address that and do refunds and all that.
I can address that, or if you would rather address the question, it, it's, I can do it, it's fine. Yeah, so, um, for parents that are listening or whatever, if you bought a ticket and you, um, would like. You have a couple of options, um, we're putting on a, you know, you can use it for the other play in the spring, um, Little Shop of Horrors. Uh, so we can transfer your ticket, but also, um, what we would really love is if your ticket could be a donation. To our theater program, um, the ticket sales so far just barely cover the cost of our. Um, of, of what they've done so far for this production, so, um. If you want your tickets to be a donation to the school and to the theater program, do nothing, and thank you. Um, if you would like, if you would prefer a refund, or if you would like to go ahead and transfer those tickets to the next performance. You can reach out to Mr. Haynes, would they, would you rather them reach out to you?
We're gonna send out a terrifying.
So, there are options.
Awesome, okay.
Would you guys like for Katie to come up and do a COVID update?
That's number five, I was about ready to call her up, that'd be great. There's Katie.
We know you're so excited to come and do these.
Hello, so, when we went on our holiday break in December, we had eighty-six cases in the district. Just that we had for this whole year, we now have two hundred and forty-seven.
Oh my gosh.
So we certainly saw the Omicron surge, that has certainly started to calm down. Um, it, within the district, we have twelve active cases, which in twenty twenty, I would've been like, we have twelve active cases. But right now, that's way more reasonable, um, and only two of those are staffed. So when it comes to having staff, we're not seeing that same issue that we had, um. The only other update I wanted to give, um, the Department of Health released a statement on the first of February. That stated that schools, there's no longer a directive that requires them to quarantine and contact trace. However, it is still best practice, I, we will still do best practice, um, as long as we are able. So, but the alternative that I wanna offer is just going back to the test to stay program. So if your child is exposed at, at school, we can offer rapid testing every day that they would have been in quarantine. Um, and then if they start to show symptoms, but they have a negative test, we would send them home, so they could have a P C R test, or go see their doctor, or whatever they need to do. Um, but I also wasn't sure, because the Department of Health said there's no more directive about contact tracing and quarantining. If you all needed to vote on, that's how we're going to do things.
Um, I mean, if, if that would solidify our stance, I, I think it's fine for us to vote to continue best practices. Um, my, I actually had a question, if, if the kid is fully vaccinated, do they still have to test to stay?
No, because they wouldn't have to quarantine, unless they started to have symptoms.
So this applies to unvaccinated kids?
Unmasked, unvaccinated, uh, or no infection within the last ninety days.
Okay, so.
We still have the mask mandate going.
We still have a mask mandate till the, till March.
Students with accessions, so we just wanna make sure that we're.
Okay, okay, got it, um. I had a question.
I mean, I guess for the sake of not, not being unclear, perhaps we should vote to continue to follow best practices as we have been.
Well, in that way, Mary Angela and I have something to lean on that says, this is how our district is, even though there is no directive, this is how our district is handling.
One clarifying point, though, I mean, uh, we've all seen with Omicron, that vaccination doesn't necessarily do a whole heck of a lot. Is it, I mean, should we, should we, should we, should it be different if someone's been vaccinated?
I mean, I'm happy to test anyone that wants to be tested, honestly, uh, we've tested uncles and boyfriends, and I mean, we just wanna make sure that. Everyone, because it was so hard to find tests for so long, so we just wanna test those who need tests. So I mean, if we want to say anyone exposed, that's fine with me too.
So that was gonna be, that was gonna be one of my questions, is that do we have the ability to, to test like that?
So here and at the elementary campus, we still have rapid tests on hand, so as long as the state will continue to provide those to us, we will continue testing.
And then when you say symptoms, what are we defining those symptoms are, because?
Anything outside of your baseline, I mean, because it's been stomach issues with some kids, it's been headaches, it's runny nose. I mean, it's anything that's outside of your baseline, and come allergy season, that gets harder, but, you know.
Yeah, cause I just, like, I know with Omicron too, like, I've, we've heard that it's affecting different people different ways. Um, so I just wanna make sure that we understand what those, what we're calling symptoms, like, obviously, before COVID ever existed. If somebody had fever, they went home, we knew that, but like, if somebody just coughed because they choked up on their water, you know, that doesn't mean we have to go and test them.
Mary Angela and I feel like are, are doing a good job when it comes to triaging, assessing, has this kid had, you know, do they have asthma? Do they have, or just the whole picture of the kid? Um, but then we will also still reach out to parents, you know, hey, this is going on, maybe not too concerning. Has anyone at home been sick, what's going on?
Awesome, so is it fair to say your recommendation right now is just to continue, kinda continue, continue best practices, continue our current process and, and procedure?
I, I think so, yes, um, and even with fully vaccinated, I, I, we still reach out to parents and say. You know, despite their vaccination status, yes, they have been exposed, keep an eye on them, if you would like me to test them at some point, let me know.
Do, do you feel like we need to have documented best practices? Or do we just go based on what we've been, like, we know what?
If we're voting on something, we need it in writing, right?
Do you want me to send something tomorrow?
The, the current CDC recommendation, because it's sort of rolling.
Yeah, it's always, it's always. Well, I guess there's a, if we're continuing with the same thing we're doing now, there's not really much to vote on there, is there?
My only concern is because the Department of Health says there's no directive, that a, a parent could say.
So we, so we've all seen our current process, we've, we voted on that in the past, so if you're, it seems like we could, we could accurately or, or reasonably vote. To continue that process, based on the fact that we've already seen it. So, do you guys agree?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, so I would, I will go ahead and make a motion to continue the current process with the best practices.
Sure.
Um, I'm, so it's five days, right?
Yeah.
So, I just, surprise, guys, I have a differing opinion. We just talked about all of this and trying to keep the kids in school. But yet, if they're in close contact, we send them home for five days.
Well, we're keeping them at school, we're testing them daily during their quarantine process, so they can stay at school.
You're testing them during that five days?
As long as they test negative in the morning, they stay here.
He's going to school, he just has to test during that five day period.
And so if a parent doesn't want their child to be tested, then they have to stay home. So then they have a kind of a forced loss of learning, I feel like, sort of forced, but just, I mean.
I'm sorry, I need a little clarification too, so, if they've been exposed. The CDC's, who's, whoever is in charge of this, there's no directive, so you don't have to call anybody. But you're saying best practice is, I'm gonna call the three kids around them and say, these three kids have been exposed. Then what, what happens to these three kids?
So we run through a list, have they had COVID in the last ninety days, are they vaccinated, um, were they wearing their masks? Do they, especially at the elementary campus, do they eat lunch sitting right next to each other? Um, so all of that plays into whether or not they have to quarantine, so this is what we've been doing up until this point.
Okay.
So moving forward, it would be, instead of sending them home.
So, so if, if they don't pass the test, if they have, if these three have sat close to somebody and eaten lunch, they're not vaccinated. Whatever it is, they don't pass the test, what we've been doing is send them home for five days.
On their date of last contact, so it's not just a five day, it's, it could've been last Friday, so maybe they're just missing Monday, Tuesday.
So that's all.
So instead of that, we are gonna test them during that five day period, and if they test positive, then they get to be sent home. If they refuse to test, then they get to be sent home, but if they test negative.
I think that's the part I'm hung up on, so if, if you call me and you say, hey, your kid's been in close contact, and I say, I don't want you to test him for the next five days. and I say, I don't want you to test him for the next five days, then I don't have an option. I have to keep him home.
So that's the way that we were doing test to stay previously. So that's where I would say.
And that's because there was a directive to do so.
And your recommendation is that we continue that process right now?
That is my recommendation, so that we can keep other kids from getting sick and having to go home because we're having to be isolated.
And if we're looking at the data, like you already said, I mean, everything's fallen off and collecting.
So how many kids are, is this, is this affect, do you think, just generally right now?
For both campuses, we have eight kids that are in quarantine right now. We've had several more, I mean, you know, previously.
Of course, I I meant to ask this earlier. What we did and voted on last meeting, the the big, the the fun meeting, was in hopes to come flatten the curve.
It was in hopes that we would prevent more spread, but also keep our staff from being overwhelmed.
And did that, was that successful?
We had more cases rise when we were out, and then they were, they had that time to recover and come back.
I mean, the way I see it is that the proposed, the proposal, the best practices provides different options. And if a parent um does not want their kids to be tested, then that's great, but they need to take the responsibility of what that choice entails. And like, I mean, that's, that's just how I personally see it. There's, again, it, we're gonna go back to the same debate that we had the last meeting. We we, you cannot please everybody. We just have to look at what's the best options for the majority that we think. I mean, there, there's reasons that, you know, the, that we're, we're sitting here to try to help with those decisions. And um again, we're not gonna, you know, please everybody. And I I think it is a fair, it's a fair proposal. Um say, you have options you don't want. We're not saying you have to get the vaccine. We're not saying you have to do all these, like, just, just get a test. If if you get a test and it tests negative, great. We, we, everything keeps moving. If it tests positive, then, you know, that means somebody's sick, they have to go home and 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 take care of themselves and get better.
The same thing would happen if you weren't vaccinated for chickenpox. We would have to send you home. But with this, we at least have an option to keep your child in school.
And it's, I mean, it kind of goes back to the same thing, like I, prior to COVID. I mean, we, we, like, we forgot how life was prior to COVID, unfortunately, because COVID has taken over our life. But like, I've gotten those calls so many times. Your kid runs a fever, don't bring him home. Don't bring him back to school after twenty-four hours after the fever broke. Nobody ever complained about that, you know? And now we're saying, like, just because we want them to get tested to make sure that there's nothing wrong with, they might be spreading or 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 causing, like, you know, I might get COVID and not show any kind of symptom. And but I might expose, if if I don't take the test and I know that I'm positive, and I might expose to somebody that could end up being hospitalized. So I, you know, it's, I think it's important just to know who has it and who doesn't.
There, it's important that, I mean, there are plenty of parents. That's, we are, we're, we're brought up here because we're, we're trying to represent the, represent the parents, right? Also represent teachers as well. Plenty of parents that that agree with what you say. Plenty of parents that agree with what you say. Um I still think, it, when it comes down to it, you know, in the interest of time, I mean, because this conversation, we could talk about this for the next four hours, and we won't, we won't have an answer, cuz there is no perfect answer to COVID. The last two years has offered us zero opportunity at perfect answers. Um so I do feel like it is, if we backed you all the way from, from, for the last two years and your recommendations and the recommendations of Dr. Riley, I think it's a fair motion to put on the table and and we can vote on it. But Adrian, go ahead.
Yeah, can I just have a couple more minutes? A quick question about, are we still doing this pool testing or?
No, it was interfering with the cure that we give on a daily basis. And for us, we got.
That seemed.
Personally, that was actually more of my decision, because I had about a hundred on my campus. And to get them all tested and to FedEx in time, I have diabetics, I have kids with asthma.
So as a follow-up to that question, what, what you're proposing now, what you're saying you want to do, are, do you feel like the two of you can handle the load? Cuz I think, especially with the bigger districts, that's, that's what the, I think that's what the do, doing away with it was really trying to just take the load off of the school nurses, right? So you feel like it's manageable for us?
This is absolutely manageable. The other, I had, you have to scan.
Pool testing was a disaster. I mean, it was a good, good idea, wasn't thought all the way through. That has nothing to do with you. What happens um on your campus, and I don't, do we have somebody here from the elementary? I don't know. If, well, if the nurse says, okay, this kid's out for five days, but they're not sick. Like, are we, what are we offering these kids or these families? Um how are we?
On our campus, if you can back from the last, I'm gonna look back and say, the last time we voted on this, it was, we had nine faculty now. I think I've had an additional six. Get that, and so like that, that time to be at home, you were still able to do some learning and let everybody recover. So I, thank you so much for that. But, yeah, we, we, we're operating Google environment now. So so our expectation on this happen to say, what you're doing in person, you are keeping live and up to date on Google Classroom, so that somebody can access it if they go home, they can, it's, it's not necessarily synchronous learning, like login to the lecture.
They can see, the lessons are there, they can do the work. Cuz it's on there. Yeah, so the five days, if you're not sick, you're not doing nothing. You're working.
Well, I mean, and that's my concern is, are they doing it, though? These kids are going home for five days. They have the option to do it, but are they doing it?
I mean, mine do. It goes back to the kids and the parents, right? At the end of the day, like, you, teachers, I, I think I made this comment twice. I used to, I've, I've uh done, like, watched on that on the elementary campus. And like, teachers, even with a full class, you cannot control every single student, right? So like, the, the, the students have to be responsible, the parents have to be responsible. If the parent says, I don't want my kid to be tested, they're gonna come home, they should know that by that, they're gonna miss five days of live school. So they have the option to go to the Google Classroom. And they're not communicating, like, that is on them. That is not, like, people have to start making, like, you want to make choices. You know, you have to make the choice and 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 deal with this choice, right? Like, we can't, we can't control everything.
That's all my questions.
Fortunately, with a lot of our students who have, they're testing positive and they have mild or no symptoms, like, they are able to stay.
Good practice for the real world, because when you take vacation off of work, your work is piling up as well.
Well, Tafik and Emily, I appreciate, appreciate both of you guys speaking up about it, because like I said, you guys are representing the, the two most prominent viewpoints of our parents. So I do appreciate you guys both, both speaking up.
Good topic. Did you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and make a motion, motion to uh continue the best practices as um yeah, per the CDC, CDC um recommendations. Um with them saying that we're gonna send documentation to the parents, letting them know what those, like, expectations are. Can we do that?
Is the five day test to stay for vaccinated or unvaccinated?
Toss that around, but I don't think we.
What is it currently?
It's for unvaccinated, no infection in the last ninety days, uh and unmasked.
I'll, I'll look at Dr. Riley and ask her thoughts.
I mean, you know, if you're asymptomatic and vaccinated and you've been wearing your mask, the odds are very much in your favor. So I'm fine with continuing that practice.
She does it.
Yeah.
So that's our motion.
Okay, so second.
Voting, all in favor?
Question wasn't answered. She said vaccinated can test to stay, the unvaccinated.
Unvaccinated, unmasked, hasn't had COVID in ninety days.
What? They have quarantine for five days? Everybody can test to stay?
Yeah.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
I think we, uh, uh, any opposed? Okay, there we go. Some motion carries. Thank you, Nurse Katie. Uh let's move to item six, Teachers and Students of the Month. Um so, are we gonna do the whole stand up, take a picture thing? Are those people, are those people here? Okay.
Yes, they are.
So why don't we, uh, is the board going around in front of the table here?
Yes, you are. Thank you.
Hey, our elementary school teacher of the month is Amanda Shover. Well, counselors appreciate, well, perfect then. You gotta be in the middle. For the high school, I have Taryn Thomas. Taryn Thomas here? No Taryn Thomas? Okay. Well, thank you very much, Taryn Thomas. I'll give this one back to you, Debbie.
Thank you.
I don't have what?
No.
I didn't hear what you said. Do you want to give that one and just cover the name or?
I voted for myself.
Well, this will Photoshop in an award. Alrighty. Students of the Month.
For seventh and eighth grade, Giovanni Miller. For ninth and tenth grade, Suri Bear. For eleventh and twelfth grade, Cecilia Katus.
Good job on your pronunciations there. Good job on your pronunciations.
Any reason we don't do Students of the Month at elementary school?
They get their awards at Rise and Shine.
Rise and Shine, yeah.
Can we, like?
Recognize them? Absolutely. We'll start next month.
Okay, number, item number seven, Student Council Report. Is Roddy with us? There he is.
So, um, we've been great. Recently, uh, the last month or so, a lot of my peers, student council of different grades, have expressed that they're unhappy or something about how things are at school. And I'm, it begged me the question, well, why? Like, why are they upset and stuff? So we created an anonymous outreach forum that we sent out yesterday during our, the school day advisory. And it is still active, and we are still receiving responses. On the goal of this forum was to collect all this data from the students and like, figure out what's issues. We had the first half of this forum be uh a statement, and the student can choose if they agree or disagree with the statement, stuff like, I am happy with the community, just like, things like that. And then the next half thing was open responses, um just going over different aspects that students might be concerned about. So we released it then, and we've already gotten over three hundred responses. Which is fifty percent of the school, if I'm right, of our high school population, which is more than I would have expected. Like, I'm genuinely surprised by that. Anyway, we're going to take all this data and look for trends in like their open responses, like, okay, here's an issue, here's another issue, figure out what the students are upset about. Then we're going to, again, um break that down to what can student council do to help fix this issue? What are we gonna present to the admin, like, things like that? And lastly, what to present to basically everybody? And we're hoping to continue this survey process to also give back to students, like, here, we listened, here's this, what do you suggest we do to fix this situation? And we're hoping that this can continue and keep representing the student body as well as possible.
I love it.
Yeah, it's great. Great, great job.
Hopefully have a big report by next morning, once we get through all this data. Hopefully by the end of the week we finish with it, but we're gonna wait till, in two weeks.
That data is the word of the day.
Apparently, yeah.
Great job.
Great job, Roddy. Thank you.
Hey, next item, we have comments from the public. Do we have any comments from the public? Nobody signed up? Uh next, item number nine, the consent agenda. Uh this is looking at our January school board minutes. Um I believe that they are attached here. Yes, they are. So guys, take a moment if you haven't already. I've reviewed them digitally beforehand. Are there any issues? If not, I'll take a, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. They all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Did you get the first and seconds, Debbie?
Uh, it was Marissa.
Yeah, Marissa wins. All right, uh, let's see. Nine point two was the financial. Oh no, this is all the consent. It's all, never mind, we're all good. Uh, new business, number ten, the disposition of a certificate of deposit. Is that, uh, is that Dr. Roberts?
This has been a very interesting process, to say the least. So, um apparently, there was a CD that was required to be put in place with our vest to secure a loan for a bus. In order for, so the CD is up for ex- expiration, and we would like to roll that into our operating budget. It's like twenty-five hundred dollars. But we cannot do that because um my name is not on it.
None of our names are on it.
Any of our names are on it. So after going to our vest, um and then talking with them several times, we did have to reach out and look at, reach out to the Department of Finance and Administration, DFNA, to find out why this CD was required for the purchase of a bus that we no longer have. They um did all the tracking on it, and they really, obviously commented, this is the, this is the strangest request we've had in a long time. So in order for us, so the, the end of the story is, in order for us to do that, it has to be on the board minutes that we approve that we can put my name on the um CD. So then I can then say, we would like to remove the CD and let that, let that funds roll in for operating.
Any questions?
Nope.
I move that we add Dr. Roberts to the certificate of deposit, remove these people that are no longer with us, and roll the C- CD money into our operating account.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Ten point one, approval of school calendar. So that's revisiting, uh revisiting our discussion from section four. Is there, are there any other um clarifying points, any other questions that we have?
I do have a question. With this, the approval of the calendar, are we also talking about the start? Like, how, are we adjusting the start time and end time? And what is that?
We, we can do this two ways. We can, just to prove the calendar and look, give more conversation for the start and end time and talk, discuss that next month, or we can do it both at the same time. We do need to prove the calendar, because that needs to be uploaded into our cycle reports um next week.
I think separating the two is a good, I think there's um some additional feedback that we probably need around the start and end times of the school day. I think we should separate the two. But I just want to make sure that when we vote on this, we're not voting on the start and end time.
This is just for the alternative calendar, the alternative schedule or calendar schedule that you proposed and had up here on our presentation.
I will say that this, the alternative sc- calendar waits the hours into the amount of days that we have. So I think that if we approve the calendar, we have to approve it with a seven point five hour day. As opposed to, now, this is not determining the starter and time, but the calendar actually exists based on the number of hours.
Yes, yes, yes. Yeah, I just don't like, the, whether it's gonna be at the beginning of the day or at the end of the day, is something that we, I think we have to get a little bit more data. Yes, yes, yes. Yeah, I just don't like the, whether it's gonna be at the beginning of the day or at the end of the day, is something that we, I think we have to get a little bit more data around.
There you go. Well, given that the bus, the bus survey just, that just went out today as well, I think it, it looks like it's going to weigh out to where there's a clear preferred option, but if there's, if there's not any prompting reason for us to rush, then I agree, we could just vote on the calendar and the seven, seven and a half hour day.
Sounds great.
Uh, can I get someone, any other questions or clarifying points? No, go ahead. Motion?
I want to approve the school calendar as presented for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, let's see, item ten point three, presentation for approval of a new visual arts teacher at the elementary school campus.
So, I would like to present consideration for the hiring of an additional visual arts teacher for the elementary campus. Um, this will allow students to see their visual arts teachers more frequently, which is the one week every nine weeks. Um, they will work in tandem, um, sharing some grades, but then keeping some grades, um, focused on, you know, individually. Um, so this will help reduce some workload and allow them to, um, exhibit work without such a overload on their teaching day.
Is this for this year, immediately or next year?
It will be for the start of the school year.
So, uh, this next school year?
Yes. And the money is coming from? So, we're in a position right now that we've got both parties in on staff. So, this would not be a new person we would bring in, we would just reassign someone that's already on our employee payroll.
Gotcha.
Also, we haven't done the personnel budgeting for this next year, so.
Okay.
I move that, well, are we?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, I move to approve, um, the new visual arts teacher for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, we are for the elementary campus. Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, let's see, item ten point four, discuss school board election for twenty twenty-two.
So, we're gonna open this up to basically talk about when the election cycle begins and kind of what you would like to see as the process is moving forward. In the past, um, the, we have had, uh, videos displayed on the website and run those through social media, um, as well as, um, well, I don't know why I'm telling you history, because I, you probably know it way more than I do, but that's the part that I know. So, how you would like to open those nominations and applications, um, is probably what we need to decide on.
Well, the how, um, um, uh, I guess less concerned about the when, I guess is probably the thing that sticks out to me. I wanna make sure that we are very proactive about getting this out to the public and giving them the option to, getting people the option to, uh, put their names in. Something that I've been thinking about too, though, is, is, uh, we have, you know, we, we've kept this board exclusively, or, uh, it's kept the seats available exclusively for people who have kids at the school. Um, and I don't wanna lose sight of that, I think that that's great. Um, so, and, and idea or something that's kinda sticking out to me is that we have a lot of talent that's in the community. Would it make sense for us to, uh, to make a modification to our, uh, bylaws or where, wherever this exists, um, that would allow one seat on the board to, to be someone that's from the community that doesn't necessarily have parent or kids at the school? Uh, that's something that just was an idea, I wanna toss it out to the table, see what you guys think.
I was actually gonna bring up that same point, so, one that you did. Uh, but I, I think it's, um, you know, not just the talent, but like, you know, exposure as well. Um, and, um, you know, I think it would help us also with, with fresh ideas, understanding, you know, what's happening across the wider community of North Los Angeles, you know, having that, that perspective, I think, um, will help. So, yeah, I, I do like that idea.
I think there may be some value, value to in, to opening it up to the arts community, right? We're really , um, wanting to focus on our mission and hone in on, um, our arts integration and, um, you know, our teachers and faculty probably already know several people in the community that would just be, you know, a really great addition to the team. So, I, I think it would be beneficial. I, like you started to say, I'm, I don't think we need to replace all the parents, but, um.
I do think it should be, if we're gonna entertain it, it should be one seat. I wa- I wanna make sure that the, if we've got seven people on this board, that the interest, that the interests of the parents are, are represented first and foremost. Uh, but I just feel like it could add something to, to what we're doing.
Would, do you feel that the term for that one seat should be the same? Or should it be looked at as a, uh, or maybe even like for the first year, um, be a shorter term?
Hmm.
Just to, because it's, it's something new, different, like, is there something we, we will wanna not put ourselves in a situation that we might?
What do you guys think? I'm open.
I think it's hard to, um, I think we have some new people in our, uh, I mean, across the board that have made giant leaps, right? But I think sometimes it's hard to move that needle in such a short amount of time. A year sounds like a long time, but when we're talking about, we're meeting once a month and we're working on these projects, I would hate to go out to a community member and say, please invest in our kids, please invest in our school, but everything that you wanna do and all your good ideas have to be completed in a year. It seems like it might not be enough time to kind of, the direction that we're going is to really hone in on our mission and to really focus on being the best art school that we can be. And that's not gonna happen overnight. I mean, we can already see that we're moving the needle, uh, just in all of the different, um, things that we're doing, but it, I think it's, I think I would want someone that's willing to commit more time to our kids and our community.
Do you guys, do you guys think this should be a seat that is reserved of the seven, reserved only for community, or is this something that where they should, that a person from the community who doesn't have kids could just go into the same pool as everybody else, and if they have the most votes, then they, then they can fill that one seat? You understand what I'm saying?
I would think same pool. Just because I wouldn't want, I mean, we're elected by our community, so, um, if in an election year, there are, there's only one seat and the highest, you know, our community wants to elect another parent, then, then that's their choice, right? But.
And you're, it's bubbling the, the playing field.
But I could also, I mean, I could see value in saying, there, there's value in having a community member on here, so.
Yeah, but like, I, and, but I think it's, you know, leaving it up to the community to vote and make that decision, I think, and when, when you put, when you put them on the same pool, uh, all the candidates in the same pool, then you're focused on the experience and what that candidate can bring in. And that, you, you don't have, one, one of them have a, you know, leg up over the other that, oh, this seat is reserved for, somebody that has my background versus, you know, like,
Well, and if you had a great pool of pa- of parent candidates, excuse me, a great pool of, of parent candidates, uh, and you, but you were forced to choose someone from the community to fill that role, who maybe is sixth or seventh on the list, well, that's probably not a great situation.
Yeah, that's, I guess that's what I was starting to, to make it.
No, I, I like.
Your articulation is a lot better than that.
I think that's a good point, yeah. So, um, yeah.
So, I also wanted to just make sure, and this is off the, that, um, we ensure that school employees are able to be included in the vote for school board members. Um, if they, because if they don't have a child, then they don't, in the past, they have not received a ballot, so.
I, I agree. That's a great idea.
Yeah. All, every person we employ should have a vote.
So, hammering down to details.
Right.
Um, traditionally, the actual election has happened the second or third week of April. Vic, when was it last year? Yeah, it was roughly around tax day.
It was, it was around Space Camp.
Yeah.
So, what was the date on Space Camp?
It was April, it was April.
What was the date on Space Camp?
So, um, pulling up a calendar, I think we need to pick a date for the election. And if we're looking at April, if we did it on tax day, that would be April fifteenth, which is a Friday. Or we could say that's too stressful and do it April twenty-second, a week later. Um, so, does anybody have a preference on day?
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second, okay.
I don't think it was, used to be end of the week. I used, I think it used to be in the middle of the week.
Okay. Well, or, you know, last year.
About Tuesday or Wednesday is usually what.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Last year, we, we did it electronically with the option that you could come into the building and vote if for some reason you were unable to do it electronically. Um, and so, I think that's fine. If we want to designate the week of the twenty-second as the time period to respond and vote, we could say, you've got, sorry, fast code mask. You've got the eighteenth through the twenty-second to vote, and.
You know, we've always had a concern about our low turnout.
Right, well, that's what I'm getting to. So, if we give five days, you have, you have five days to respond. You can do it electronically like we did last year, which seemed to work very smoothly. Or for some reason, you're unable to do it electronically, you have the option to walk into the high school, uh, or the elementary offices and cast a paper ballot, um, for those five days. And then, to me, part of the reason we've always had such low turnout is because we're not blasting the information.
Yeah.
You know, you get like one email four weeks beforehand that the election is gonna happen on this day. You know, people have short attention spans. I think we need to designate a filing period, which to me should be maybe two weeks in, at the end of February, the last two weeks of February, if that makes any sense. Um, you have to file by, let's say, we do the last two weeks, March fourth would be the end of the filing period.
First, you apply to be a candidate.
To apply to be a candidate. And then, we designate a period of time to get your information filled out and.
The video and.
What do we think about the videos? I kinda like the videos.
I like the videos.
I like the video, you know, you get your face, you get to say your spiel.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Also, as parents, the last time, the videos were very helpful, but they were kind of posted on the media time.
Right.
And it's hard for you to make a decision when you have, when you have some videos available and not all of them are available.
Yeah, I, I think we need a deadline. Yeah.
Well, if we're, if we're vote, if we're voting the week of April eighteenth, um, and March fourth is the last day for turn, for turn-ins, I, I think it's reasonable to get everybody shot in that two week period, so there's a full month of those videos being posted, if people can learn it. That'd be a good, I think, a reasonable goal. Would you agree?
Yeah.
You know, listen.
I think you should dress up in your, um, Captain America costume and go back out to the elementary school car line.
Yeah.
And fold up a sign that says, "Vote today."
Cat wants you to vote.
Deadline of.
Is that how you got your vote?
I don't know what you're talking about, I'm not Captain America.
Well, I've seen the picture.
Well, so the, so the fourteenth through the twenty-fifth of March is intercession and spring break. So, if we say your last day to file is the fourth, and you need to make your video the following week. And obviously, if you file before the fourth and you, you know, that's a bad week for you, and you wanna make your video before the fourth, I'd say that's doable, right? March fourth is a Friday. March fourth is a Friday. So, you get your video done by the eleventh. It's posted for an entire month. And if, if it's up to me, which obviously it's not, I'd say you get once a week emails, every Monday, look at the video, the election's coming up. Here's how it's gonna happen.
Social media.
You're gonna get this. Yes, ma'am.
Is there any way, like, make a, make a candidate available for questions?
I love that. I would love to do a candidate.
We talked about it doing a town hall.
Yeah. So, we could do.
Any other way that will be described to give a candidate?
We can explore, yeah, we can explore an option to do it.
Yeah.
That's a great idea.
Yes.
Vic, what was it, three minutes last time?
Yeah, three minutes, something like that, that's very reasonable.
I think we could totally schedule, yeah, we could schedule a candidate forum for, you know, sometime around the week of the, you know, the week before election week. You know, or actually, the next, the school board meeting would be the twelfth. So, if we really wanted to make it a long night, we could do school board plus candidate. Or we could do it another night. I'm out on that one. No.
We did, yeah.
It was every parent. Yeah. But the thing that didn't happen was it did not include school employees, and we would like to include, every school employee gets a vote. Yeah, so.
So, let me, because we've talked about it a lot. So, first, let me ask for, for a, um, for someone to make a motion on allowing one non-parent board member, um, to, to fill a role, only one, only one seat on our, on the board.
To allow one seat to be available for a non-parent board member if voted.
Okay, and that would be, that would involve mo- a modification to our, I don't know, the bylaws or the, there you go.
My second.
Second from Marissa, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, um, now, so, as far, do you need a motion from us and a vote on the anticipated, on the, on the start date on?
I don't think the plan we have to vote on.
I think.
Okay. That's just discussion.
Process is gonna be.
Okay. Right, then we'll let that, we will let that go.
Okay. And we'll get all this clarified and out, and we'll keep it in the loop and get all the details.
Do we need to vote to make sure that all school employees receive a ballot?
Oh, that? Yeah, yeah, I agree. I think that's correct.
I would like to.
So, would you make a motion for that?
Sure, I'd like to make a motion that all school employees receive a ballot and are able to.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries as well. Thank you, Melissa. Um, item ten point five, lottery presentation.
So, you, did you give them all the, the lottery?
I did.
I think it's the last sheet.
So, um, we've sent out a student's intent to return. So far, um, we've gotten, out of eight hundred and thirty-seven responses, we've gotten eight hundred and thirty-one are returning. So, I think that's, um, a great indication. We've got that, those kids coming back. Um, and then, we, um, are working on our lottery numbers, and the current waitlist are on the, uh, far right-hand two columns.
And how long do they have? Our lottery is soon, right? How long do they have to do their intent to return?
So, we're trying to cut that off at the same time, so that the lottery, and we're gonna pull the lottery on the twenty-second.
Of February? And that has to be done in person, or you just have to have a lottery, you just have to have an ADE person here?
Yeah, we're just gonna roll the, the, um, computerization of that.
So, do our parents understand that if they don't turn in their intent to return?
Well, we're gonna send out another, another reminder, um, and, uh, continue to push that.
When was the deadline for that?
We're still missing.
We kept it open, um, but we're gonna send out, for the remainder of February, we're gonna send out like every other day, reminder, intent to return. And see if you can increase that. We're not too far off our cap on that, so that's, I mean, that's really, um, terrific, but we would like to make sure that if they're coming, we know and have a spot reserved for them.
We're still missing three hundred and forty-three responses.
I think this went out today, though, didn't it, Dr. Roberts?
Yesterday.
Turn?
Yeah.
Was that yesterday?
Oh, yesterday, okay.
Yeah, it was this week.
So.
Oh, I did, I thought it was before that. Okay, well, that's.
They're really good.
Oh, well, that's really good. In two days. I thought it was much longer than that.
Can we, I'm, I'm trying to.
Can we, I'm I'm trying to see if I can get this out of here, but like being able to understand the retention from elementary to middle school, so like sixth to seventh, then eighth or no.
Yes, just.
Seventh and then eighth to ninth grade, middle to.
So if you look at, if you look at the the two columns on the left, so the current enrollment and the lottery enrollment, so we're we're pretty even at elementary, eighty, eighty-one, eighty-four. That's all even. And you'll see on the high school, the class sizes begin to increase. Our biggest concern is our twelfth grade class. And that's not up to where it should be. That's very consistent with open enrollment charter. So our hope is that we will continue. We've got a lot of lottery waitlists for the kindergarten class. So that's gonna fill and that's gonna hopefully bump everyone down based on our intent to return. So our hope is that we can retain all of our high school and fill the twelfth grade class with what we've got right now and maybe add in a few more. So always our big, big concerns are juniors and seniors. I I don't have any concerns. I mean, we've got variances of elementary. We've got good numbers there. If you look at our lottery numbers and our waitlist for our senior classes, it's zero and six, zero and ten, zero and forty. So those are our concerns right now, but we're hoping that we are able to fill that backfill with the matriculation.
I just know that those like, you know, going, especially often it's like the eighth to ninth grade is where a lot of students tend to change schools, especially, and I've seen that happened with, you know, friends that they used to be part of our school and that's when they decided to, you know, part ways with the school. So I I I just, I'm interested to know what that impact is.
And I think we'll see a change in that, too, once our families see that we're offering these pathways. Like you said, we're gonna lose some moving from eighth to ninth because of whatever reason, right? Like maybe they want the aviation or the HOSA pathway. We don't offer that and the other bigger schools do. But once they see that we have developed pathways and, you know, our amazing art programs, I I think we'll see those numbers. We may lose a few to sports or again, like if they if they want the medical pathway, if they want HOSA, if they want to have their CNA license by the time they graduate high school, we don't offer that. And so they're gonna go somewhere else, but we're gonna be able to draw in the kids who, you know, wanna work with Aaron and and have, you know, whatever stagecraft thing or wanna get their, what's the thing for food? And but there's a.
Safe serve.
Their safe serve license, right? You you get your safe serve license when you're seventeen or eighteen and you can pretty much get a job anywhere, anywhere, in any kitchen you want, so.
And I'm talking about both ways, right? Like I said, to your point, there's, even though we might be losing some for different things, but we're also gaining students that decided, hey, you know what? I wanna focus on the arts a little bit. So that that's why I'm interested in that, in that metric to to understand like, how is that? How is that tracking, right? Like?
We need to focus, try and day the on just with that with that that has been. We are working on really defining and promoting those pathways, which is a big thing in high school. Really streamlining it and identifying what's being taught and and we just were awarded another CTE grant from Department of Education and for tech education for our interior design, fashion design. So now that's gonna be developed into a pathway because we've got the funding to purchase all the materials. So that will go into stagecraft and so we're really building out and beginning to promote and recognize the need to increase our visibility by performing and being out in the community. All those things are imperative to make sure we can have a healthy waitlist. Are we offering virtual next year as well? So that's a conversation. I would like to really look at eliminating our virtual, the success on that, as you can see. I don't know if it shows here or not. We've got.
Forty-four.
We have a low success rate currently right now with the virtual kids. They're really hard to capture and the data is not indicating much success. So I think maybe next month or April, we need to talk about, I would like to talk about, give you very specific data and talk about how we begin to eliminate that and use it only in situations where we have AMI or kids in need or ill or something like that. We just, because we're an art school and we use that so heavily hands on, it's just, we're not designed in a way to make that successful. Thank you, Emily.
This, this is not related directly to this, but I I forgot to mention it earlier, but I wanted to mention it. What happened to snow days?
Covid happened to snow days.
This is the thing, like, I I get it. I get it. Like, we have the ability not to, you know, lose a day, but like it is as as an adult, being stuck, working while it's, you know, we we get that snow, like it was painful and watching kids having to get caught up on schoolwork rather than, you know, go outside. Like I I do not like my kids being on electronics. I don't like them being on the TV and all that stuff. I want them to be outside. And that's like the one day, like when it's cold, be like, go, just, you know, and like, can we give our kids when it snows, just.
We have used all of our AMI days. So any days we have now will be considered snow days, but we have to make them up. So the the bad part about snow days, they're beautiful when they happen, but you have to make them up.
I just. What's the AMI limit right now?
I just wanted, like, I just wanted to kind of bring this up because it's, obviously, it's still fresh on my mind.
That the district's promoted, oh, we're having a snow day, but in the fine print, but we'll be adding a day to the end of the year.
Yeah.
So I mean, it's a give and take.
I I mean, like, I I can, I understand, like, if we have a event where you had, you're, you know, stuck at home two, three days because of snow and all that, but just have have to have one day, you know, just like that one day to.
Well, they will.
If there's any worse now.
Yes.
So I just, I just wanted to to kind of bring that up because it is something that like I, you know, I was sitting, I was working, looking outside of the window, telling my, my team's all in New York and like, they're like asking me, what do you do? And so I was like, I'm I have to work, I get. Like, I may ask them, like, well, what about the kids? They're doing school. And that's when they're like, oh, poor kids. Just wanted to kind of bring that up. It just popped in my head. Sorry. Didn't mean to.
Item ten point six, student intent to return forms. Do we already cover that?
We did.
Okay, so scratch that off. And we'll move to item eleven, which is discussing, discussion of items since the publication of this agenda. Do we have anything?
I don't know. It's no day.
So we did discuss at our board retreat, nailing down a three-year contract for Dr. Roberts. So I I wanted to formally put forth a motion that we proceed with that and that Jeff be allowed to work with the lawyers to get that paperwork done so that we can go ahead and and get her nailed down before she.
So to be clear, we're we're talking about removing the, just when we when we brought on Dr. Roberts, it was with an interim tag while we would, you know, kind of see how these first few months went. And I would, I'll go and just just volunteer my own. I think you've done a fantastic job. And and you've been a welcome addition to the team and given us some much needed structure, but but also have the ability to to reasonably assess situations and 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 come to a logical conclusion. So we've been really, really happy with that.
Data driven.
Yeah, very, very happy with that. Back to data again. But is that, so just so I'm clear, we're talking about removing the interim tag.
And and traditionally, contracts have been three years, if my understanding is correct. So if we want to go ahead and proceed with a three-year contract starting July one.
And tasking you with working through the contract.
With getting the paperwork done properly.
Okay.
Since that's your day job.
Yeah, it kind of is, yeah. Okay, so is that an official motion?
Official motion.
Any other, any other discussion on this from you guys? If not, can we have a second?
A second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, do we have anything to discuss in the executive session?
Yes.
Yes. Yes, we do. Okay, we will go ahead and temporarily adjourn to executive session.
Okay, everybody's back. Uh, no voting items coming out of executive session, uh, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
A move.
Move. Uh, copy to the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Motion carries. We are adjourned for the night. Thank you guys very much.
Well, I will tell you, when we talked about those iReady reports, we all said to say that the report is gonna go out elementary on Tuesday. So the details about every kid is going out on Tuesday. And then the parent reports from Remuson are gonna be delivered to high school tomorrow. So, are parents gonna get sent to Remuson?
Hopefully.
They're gonna be home tomorrow?
Uh, maybe.